I want to call the order, our public work session. Want to welcome all the citizens of Portsmouth and welcome my colleagues on council. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the Novell coronavirus Executive Order fifty-one on March twelfth, twenty twenty and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the eleventh day of May, twenty twenty-one without a quorum present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one and twenty twenty dash one zero two. Each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, call the roll please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Wooder.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
You're muted, Mayor.
Before we open the floor for discussion, I want to make a few comments related to the process of arriving where we are with our budget. First of all, I want to thank our city staff, our city management team, her staff, and all those who worked diligently to put this budget before us for consideration. Thank you all for your efforts. In addition to that, as the budget goes particularly with municipal government, there are many competing needs in our city budget. And some of those public needs are public safety, our schools, economic development, infrastructure, and debt service. And I can assure you, the general public, that each of the members of council take all these matters into concern when we are discussing our budget and how we move forward with approving the items that are proposed. One of the things I want to make everybody aware of is that we are required by our charter to have a balanced budget submitted and approved by the city council. That means our revenues need to equal our expenses and so that is the spirit in which we work under. A couple of other things I want to make clear is that right now we have a strong financial rating and that rating is based on discipline, fiscal discipline and sound fiscal policy. And I want to thank the previous council for their discipline and adhering to sound fiscal policy to ensure that we have those bond rates in place which allow us to borrow money at reasonable rates to meet the needs of the things that we need to do as a municipal government. So with that in mind, I want to thank my colleagues on council once again for their patience in the process and their input in the process. And I want to thank the citizens for being patient with us and their letters and words of confidence and votes of confidence and input. We're in this all together. And so with that, the floor is open for discussion, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, good afternoon to all of my colleagues and Mayor, good to see each of you. Want to just report that yesterday we had a liaison meeting with the Vice Mayor along with the liaison Tamara Schumate for the school board, superintendent of schools, our city manager, the finance representatives from both the city and the schools, a very productive discussion, letting them know that we are pro-education. In that regard, I would like for our colleagues to know that during our discussion, we let it be known that we have a council that is going to be fully supporting the budget that has been recommended by the superintendent. Given that at our last meeting, the budget request from the school, the funding request from the schools, it was one million sixty-seven thousand two hundred seventy dollars short of us fully funding. And so we presented to the city manager that we would like to see this budget fully funding our schools. I think that would be something momentous. We're dealing with issues of poverty in our city and education is one of the key movers in uplifting our community. And so we'd like for our city manager just to confirm that that local funding that we will be voting on in the budget tonight is in the amount of fifty-nine million nine hundred one thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars for our schools so that we would be fully funding their budget as requested.
You are correct. If the one point sixty-seven thousand is approved by the council, that would increase that amount.
Okay.
Councilmember Battle, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, I also agree with Dr. Whitaker one hundred percent in reference to our support for the education system in our city. However, there are support systems that make our educators have a much easier job than they possibly may have not had in the past. And this support system is made up of putting formal formal assistance in the neighborhoods that needed to help develop our youth where there is the poverty that he was talking about. And we discussed adding one point five million dollars to the budget for that endeavor. Now, when the citizens called us and asked us about the shootings and about the problems of crime that we're having in our city, now is the time to start digging ourselves out of that trench of having those things. And the answer is putting these programs in the areas of our city that need it. So when Vice Mayor and I met with the city manager, we spoke about the program. We looked at it and we decided that we would do our best to put the funding in to make those services available. And those services are dearly needed because when you have a nineteen-year-old and they assume the responsibility of a home, whether it's a male or female, they need assistance in their development and their growth. And especially when they have kids, they need help, guidance, tutoring, after-school programs to help the kids with the education system, community policing to get the merge that we need with the police department in those communities. And putting all this together, we should be answering the call of our citizens who ask us to do a better job with crime in those communities. So I'd like to thank the city manager for finding those funds and I'd like to thank her for adding that in the budget. And she'll acknowledge, I hope, that the budget does contain such. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir. And before we get there, I'd like to ask the city manager to comment on.
Yes, I am very much aware of what Councilman Battle just referred to in terms of the one point five million. But let me be clear that the council needs to vote on that tonight in order to have those funds in the budget. We have identified where the funds can come from, but that would take a council action to be able to include those funds.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And my question, I guess, goes to our school board liaisons and the original budgeted amount and the additional one million sixty-seven dollars. During your meeting, was there any indication of what that additional funding that was missed was for? Or was that just something overlooked in our budget? Or was it just not put in there, how that get missed? And I just want to know what that additional one million sixty-seven is covering.
It's not a specific item because, as you know, the school board's budget covers a myriad of areas. However, the reason why that was presented in the way that it was, I know that during the presentation that was given on February the twenty-second, where the superintendent gave the estimated needs, during that time, the local funding was based on the last year's funding, which was based on the funding formula. And so during the presentation, it was around fifty-seven million six hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars that was presented as the local funding. Based on that, there was a two-point-four billion dollar deficit. And so when adding that deficit to what was, what the budget was based on, then that's where you came up with what the school system totally needed, which was around sixty million some. And then when you backed out some of the increases that the school system is receiving from the state, some increased funding, that's where the final figure of one million sixty-seven thousand. But as far as where that one point six seven, you have instruction, student support, administrative, operational, information technology. Also, there are myriad of areas that that funding would cover.
Thank, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, does that answer your question?
Yes.
And also, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
While we're on education, I didn't finish the last time when I was speaking. I would like to make sure that the agenda is updated, the figures for item twenty-one dash one forty-one, where it has the Portsmouth Public Schools operating budget. It has a figure there that that one million sixty-seven thousand two hundred seventy needs to be added to.
Correct, sir. If you could, sir, if you could hold that thought a minute, I think what we will need to do is in order to add that item so that we don't have to have an amendment done in the regular meeting, in order to do that, we would need a consensus from council in this meeting to put that in for the upcoming meeting at five o'clock. So if you would just hold that for a minute, I have Mr. Moody and Mr. Battle. And if we can go back to that and we can ask for that consensus, is that okay with you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It looks like, Mr. Moody, you had your hand up, sir, and then, Mr. Battle, sir. Councilmember Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important for the public to know, even though we're talking about fully funding the school budget, our school system has not been in a level of poverty. In fact, and I sent this to everyone, the annual school report, the state superintendent's school report, and it has a comparison with other Hampton Road cities.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Can we have, can we just have a point of order that it's not for us to get in conversations about the salaries of the superintendent? That's a school board matter. Also, a point of order.
Councilmember Whitaker, Councilmember Moody.
I call for a point of order.
I know you did call for a point of order and Councilmember Moody has the floor.
No, no, sir. Parliamentary procedure, a point of order proceeds, speaks.
Dr. Whitaker, please, I've got the floor.
We're going to let him have the floor, sir. We'll have the discussion later, but we're going to let him have the floor.
I call for a point of order. You have to recognize my point of order.
And Mayor, my colleague is.
As the chair, I'm recognizing the speaker right now, sir, that is.
So you're not going to follow parliamentary procedure?
Right now, sir, I'm recognizing.
We're clear. I just want to make it clear.
I'm recognizing the speaker that has the floor. Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, please finish.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wasn't getting ready to share a comparison of the superintendent's salaries. So my colleague was on the edge of his seat for nothing. What I was about to do is to share the per pupil expenditures for school operations per pupil. And keep in mind, Portsmouth has the lowest average daily membership at thirteen thousand one hundred and eleven. And I suspect since Virginia has lagged behind in opening schools and Portsmouth has followed the state mandate in doing that, I suspect our ADM will be less even this coming year. But anyway, the per pupil expenditures for Portsmouth are only behind Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach is twelve thousand two thirteen. We're at twelve thousand one eighty-eight. So we have not been neglecting our schools' reference funding per student. And I won't oppose this if that's a consensus, but I do think that our schools have had adequate money. In fact, this year that we currently in, I would think that their expenditures would be less due to not attending school. And you don't have the utilities, you don't have the mileage on the school buses. So there should be tremendous savings there. But my message to the public, I invite them to go online and search for the superintendent's annual report. And there's a comparison there. So, Mr. Whitaker, I was not mentioning superintendent's salaries, but if I did, you would find that we lead the pack in that, sir.
I'm going to go to Miss Councilmember Battle, then I will come back to you, sir. Councilmember Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to say that we vote on a consensus for those funds, for those communities. And I like to say that recently, Councilperson Woodard did a review of one of those areas that we need these services in. And a sixteen-year-old gang member walked up to him and said, "Please get some services for the kids." And, you know, make sure that they stay on the correct path in their development. And he's a gang member and he's sixteen years old. And I want to say to him, "We're coming to correct your course as well. Our services are going to hit sixteen, eighteen, to twenty-two, to twenty-six." So it's not all lost. We're coming. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I just want to make sure that when we try to inform the public about educational funding, that it should be based scientifically as well as historically. The comments that Mr. Moody has made, that's an old rhetoric that we've heard from the past when it comes to funding education. And I want the public to know that we are committed to correcting some of the past practices. And just because someone has data who has probably never taken a statistics class, but someone who just throws numbers to the public without putting context to it, without being able to scientifically analyze it, is a dangerous thing. I think that when we start trying to analyze data and we have not had any type of academic training to that, that you start moving in a very dangerous direction and giving misinformation to the public. And historically, our schools have never been funded properly. Even at the state level, our schools have not been funded and it has impacted and put a lot of pressure at the local level. To also say that we are not dealing with poverty is closing your eyes to reality. And all we have to do is look at the percentage of our students who are on free and reduced lunch and to try to say that we're not dealing with poverty. And as we start looking at these other school districts, they're not comparisons because they have their own issues to deal with, just like we do. And so I'm hopeful that we have a majority on this council that is not trying to take our school system back and not trying to continue this type of environment where there's a clashing between the city and the schools. We're in this thing together. And if we're going to uplift our children, it's going to have to be funding from the city and the state that's going to do it, and we are going to be committed to doing it. And so I just want to make sure as the public analyzes that data, that they make sure that they are analyzing it scientifically and intelligently.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, you know, my colleague is quick to dismiss the figures. If you got a problem with the figures that I cited, Dr. Whitaker, I suggest you take it up with the state of Virginia. And these figures, by the way, they actually came from the school districts. So if the figures are wrong, the problem lies with the figures that our school district gave the state.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a problem with the figures, I have a problem with the interpretation. That's what I'm talking about, how we interpret.
Thank, thank you, sir. Things I would, I would just like to add to the discussion. You know, we hear a lot of conversation perhaps about councilmembers and there's a thought process that if one doesn't vote for something or vote in the affirmative for a matter or not, that they are not in support of that matter. I just want to say for the public's sake, that is not all in and of itself true. One can be in support of a matter and there can be reasons why one does not sign on to the matter. For example, there could be lack of information, a lack of understanding of what the mission and goals are and having that clearly submitted so that one can make an informed decision. I think when we say to the public that if you don't sign on for something, you don't care about it or you don't support it, that's not fair. I would argue that everybody on this council, I've talked to each of you, and I know that each and every one of you care about education and educating our children. I personally know that seventy percent, upwards of seventy percent of our children in the Portsmouth Public Schools are on free and reduced lunch. I have been to the schools, I have talked to the superintendent and the leadership. I've committed my time and my resources. And I'm not saying that to suggest anything other than there are many on this council who have served, Dr. Whitaker, our Vice Mayor included, on the school board, and many others like our Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke, Mr. Battle, of course, Mr. Moody, and Councilmember Whitaker. I mean, Woodard, who have all given their time and resources and efforts to improve in our schools. So I want to make that clear. This is about a budget and this is about funding. And although we may not always agree, the priorities that we have in our city, education is certainly one of them and it is one that I support. That's an important component of our community because we are in the business as a community of uplifting our families and our children and helping them to succeed. So I just wanted to put that out there for everybody to understand. We're all in this together, as Dr. Whitaker indicated. Thank you. Are there any other comments? I know we had talked about perhaps a consensus. Madam City Manager, I did have one question. When you met with the liaisons and through your discussion, was there any indication of there could perhaps be any unused funds that might be returned to the city as a part of the fact that they weren't encumbered for whatever reason for this year?
Not necessarily during the meeting that we had with the liaisons, but during my discussion, and it may have come up in that meeting as well, but during my discussion with the superintendent, we definitely talked about the fact that there would be remaining funds due to the most, some of the schools are still closed and just being still part of the pandemic, you still expect to see that not all of those resources are going to be used this year. And so that continues to be something that we look forward to resolving in the future as we define processes as to how we're going to go about working collectively together to shape what the needs are and ensure we're funding the needs. And so that will continue to be an ongoing discussion. But yes, there is an anticipated unspent funds for this current year that could be applied to next year.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I was, I was sorry, my phone, it was on mute.
You have the floor, sir.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I want to thank you guys for all the work that you put in the budget, the budget team, the city manager, my assistant city manager, all of those. You guys are doing a great job. I just wanted to confirm some things in our meeting with me and Councilman Battle had with the city manager. I know we talked about the Charles Pete Bill. You said that it was money in the budget for that, but it was going, we was going to come out with a plan, I think, in ninety days. Am I correct?
That's correct. We would come up, we would do a feasibility study and determine exactly what needed to be done within thirty to ninety days.
Okay. And also, as far as the CDBG funds, I know Councilman Whitaker mentioned about the homeless, starting something with the homeless shelter. I mentioned lighting for the high street corridor where the businesses are and the basketball courts. Is that also going to be included in that?
The homeless initiative, we're looking at not only CDBG funds, but also CARES Act funding. We're in the process of developing the overall plan for how we expand homelessness and how we address it. And so we will be reporting back to the council in terms of where we are with that process once we outline how we're going to go forward with that.
Okay, and my last, oh, I'm sorry. As far.
The high street lighting, that continues to be something that's under review, to my knowledge. I was under the impression that that was already in progress, but we will definitely be moving forward with that as we look at how we improve the high street corridor and how we can expand businesses and retain the ones we have in that area.
Okay, and my last thing, as far as Councilman Woodard's suggestion regarding the getting everything together for a sportsplex, will that be reflected in this budget as well?
No, that is, that is not included in the current budget. What we are focusing on at this point is doing an assessment of what our facility needs are. We need to determine a location, we need to determine exactly what we're going to do with the existing sports complex we have and what capabilities are available there. And then, once we complete that assessment, we will come back with recommendations.
Do you know how long that assessment will take?
Now, that, I do not.
Okay. Well, realistically, how long does something like that take?
Realistically. Realistically, if it be, if it's a priority, um, it could take anywhere from sixty, again, the thirty to ninety days to do a feasibility study. But I think with the sports complex, it's a little more challenging because there are a number of things we need to take into consideration. And first and foremost being what are the objectives of the sports complex? And once we determine what those objectives are, then we could start to identify what resources we would have to even move forward with that, recognizing that, you know, we have a limited amount of resources. And at this point, um, coming in at, at this particular time, I would like to step back and, and make sure that we're looking at all of our facility needs and ensuring that we can do what we need to do to, in, 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 in order to have operable facilities and come up with a comprehensive list of those facilities, which the sports complex would be one of those.
Well, um, could we get a, could we get, um, a rundown of all this information maybe in our first August meeting?
Yes, you can. That would be a sufficient amount of time for us to come back with, with the status on each of those.
And my last one, Mayor, um, as far as the, um, um, in our liaison meeting yesterday, we discussed, uh, some capital improvement, um, things regarding the school system. Um, as far as the, the field houses for the, the high schools and the turf for I C Norcom, that, that's reflected. You did find some money for that, correct?
The turf for I C Norcom? Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, one. You saying houses plural?
No, it was, it was field houses for all three high schools.
Right, and we have not identified the funding for all three. We, we have any, I haven't, I have yet to see the cost for all three first. So once, once we determine the cost, then we could identify the funding. We do have funding available. Uh, it's just a matter of understanding what the cost is.
Okay, um, but that, we, we, I think it's consensus that that be reflected in this budget. So, uh, are we able, because I know the school board did send estimates of how much all of this will cost. Um, and so, so if, I, I, I'm thinking we can use those estimates to start with and if we have to, um, lower, lower it down if we find something cheaper. Um, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I think all, um, we have at least four members that's okay with that, that, that want to give consensus regarding that, because that's what, what we originally believed that all four was getting done. I mean, all three field houses.
Well, once, once there is consensus from the council, we can definitely find, um, the necessary funds to do so. I would not say the number that was submitted to us would go down because based on engineering review, it appears that we need to, uh, address stormwater management, uh, drainage issues, lighting, et cetera. So there, there could be additional costs that we would have to account for.
Okay, and that concludes my, um, assessment. Also, when you come back for that recreational, um, in August, also can you en- include, um, what it would cost to kind of update, the, update the Krattout Recreational Center? I know that's something big for them as well. Um, they were, it was taken away from them when they, um, when they took the school down, the high school down on George Washington. Um, we've, they've been, um, contacting all of, um, council about that and that was a promise made by all of the council members as well.
Well, just if I could respond to, to the recreation center, one of the things that we were hoping for out of the schools partnership was to put programs in the schools within neighborhoods so that we didn't have to duplicate funding for trying to address recreation centers. So, um, that point, we're going to be looking to see how we can stretch our limited resources and address the programming as well as provide opportunities for our adults and, and, um, seniors in the community as well. But, um, before, you know, I could commit to updating a recreation center, we have to look at all of our facilities and make sure that we're using them to the maximum. And then let's look at what the additional needs are after we do that.
A- a- and I'm okay with that. Um, originally, I also had talked to, uh, our superintendent about possibly using some of the schools as well. So that will be presented in that report too, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and, and, and thank you, sir. And one of the things if we could add, you know, when, when we're talking about budgets and funding, one of the things we, we need to keep in mind, when you are asking for a funding mechanism, um, that's already, and a budget is already set, you have to find those dollars that you're going to take away from something that's already budgeted in order to meet the needs of what you're requesting. So in the interest of this conversation, we have a budget in place. I know there's a consensus that will be called for, for the additional million dollar, uh, and sixty-seven thousand dollars to be, to, to be, um, allocated to our public schools. But these other items that are coming up randomly, I know we've talked about them, but this is the point in which, in the budget in which, um, on major expense items, something will absolutely have to be taken away in order for those things to happen. And we have to have a balanced budget, so just keep that in mind. Um, but for purposes of this discussion, um, let's go to Councilmember Moody, who has his hand up, and then let's call for the consensus, um, vote on the million sixty-seven. Is that okay?
Just have one more item about Mr. Moody.
Okay, Ms., Ms., uh, Councilmember Moody, you, you have the floor, then Doc, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, I agree with the, uh, the Craddock piece. I think we need to look at that relative to forty-five after. That was the, uh, former meeting room, if you may. And, uh, uh, early on, it was a rec center. But, uh, when that, when that building wa- was erased and no longer used, they were left without a place to meet. Uh, currently, as we, all of us know, we've, we've been at the, uh, uh, American Legion facility and that's, that's really too small for that community to, uh, to meet in. So going forward, I'd like to see staff, uh, uh, come back with, uh, with some suggestions on how we could, uh, facilitate a, a new meeting, uh, rec place for Craddock.
Yes.
But also want to mention this council, by consensus, uh, reference the retirees. We, we're doing away with the H R A, uh, that's not in this budget. Is that correct, uh, Madam, uh, Manager?
That, that's correct.
Okay, by consensus. Also, there, there is no, uh, uh, bonus, uh, for the retirees in, in this budget. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's no cost of living in this budget for retirees. Is that correct?
Now, that's correct.
So, y- you know, I'm, I'm not pleased with that. Uh, obviously, I, I was, uh, not part of the consensus to remove those things. Going forward, I would like to see, uh, at one time, our retirees got fifty percent, uh, of the cost of living, uh, increases their, uh, general wage employees got. Uh, that was, that was removed, uh, I think about eight years ago. So our retirees have been eight years without a cost of living increase. Granted, uh, they've been getting a, a stipend or a bonus, if you may, but this year they won't get anything. And i- it's easy to say, well, there's Medicaid and this, that, and another. Some of these people that, that are in their late seventies and eighties, they retired when salaries were, were extremely low. So inflation, uh, has eaten away at, at what retirement they had. So going forward, uh, uh, I would like for us to, like for staff to get back with a proposal at some point in time on how we can, uh, restore the formula for retirees on getting at least a cost of living increase. You know, they worked long and hard for our city. They were dedicated. Uh, so I, I think we should do our best to look after them in, in their senior years. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moody. I will go to, uh, Dr. Whitaker, then, uh, Councilwoman Lukasberg.
Uh, yes, uh, just two, two issues that just want to, um, make sure we're clear on, and that's regarding the vacancies. Um, uh, City Manager, um, in our meeting, uh, was it, uh, understanding that the one thousand, uh, some vacancies that are in the budget, that there was a monetary amount that, uh, I thought i- it came to about eleven million, but four million of that is, about four million that is already included in the budget.
That's correct.
And so, um, and of that eleven million, law enforcement, uh, was about six point two million, I believe, of that vacancy. And, and so, um, um, I was glad to hear that, um, the way that we are approaching this budget and law enforcement is not just putting more police on the street, but it is looking at how we can use those, uh, funds in ways, uh, to help in areas, uh, dealing with social issues, um, dealing with behavioral, not approaching, uh, crime from just a law enforcement perspective, but from, uh, a social, public health perspective. And I, I just want to make sure that our public knows and hears from our city manager on that type of perspective as we look at, when, when, Mayor, when you're talking about, um, we're sources of funding for different programming, um, and, and, and we have an eleven million dollar vacancy and six point two of that law enforcement. And the country is in a conversation about reimagining law enforcement. And so I think that we need to make sure that our public knows about that perspective coming from our city manager. And so I, I thank you, I would, I would like for our city manager to share, uh, some of that perspective as we're looking at this, uh, vacancy and budget amount.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to. And, and based on, uh, what you were saying, what you're referring to is what I would consider our public safety framework. And our public safety framework is definitely includes law enforcement, but it includes other components of the city services that, that, mental health, education for that matter, affordable housing. It includes all those components and all those components have to work collectively together to move this city forward. And so with that, uh, we will be looking at every opportunity to ensure that our resources are aligned with our community priorities and not just filling positions because we have them, but filling positions because they're going to meet a need. And that's with every vacant position we have, not just public safety, but every position across the organization. And I've started with the city manager's office of how we can realign positions to put them directly in departments to achieve metrics that we think this community values. And that will be my, part of my ongoing vision is that we align those services with the resources we have to maximize those resources. And recognizing that this is not something that the city will do alone. We have partners and stakeholders in this community that will assist us in those efforts. And that's, that's the direction that I'm heading in and that's the direction that hopefully the next budget will reflect those priorities.
Right. But, tha- thank you, um, and, and I think it's, um, refreshing that we hear that from our city manager, who, who is the CEO of our city, that that's the type of perspective, uh, that we're bringing, uh, particularly considering, um, the, uh, community here in, in Portsmouth. My, my last, uh, issue, uh, Mr. Mayor, is I just want to go back to the question you raised about, uh, the reappropriation of the school funding. And, and, um, just want to share that, like I said, we had an excellent meeting, um, good faith, transparency. And in previous administrations, that reappropriation amount that the school board had to come up was estimated in June. And as a result of our meeting, um, that estimate or that exact amount of reappropriation will be in, uh, September, which will allow the schools to give a more accurate figure and it will allow them not to have to go back and adjust because they gave an artificial number in June. And so I just want to point that out, that that was a, a, a change that I think will bring a more smoother transition as we deal with the reappropriation.
Thank you, sir. And Co- Councilwoman Lukasberg, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, um, I too want to thank, uh, the city manager and her staff, the budget team for, uh, putting this together. I know it's a juggling act to try to get this balanced, especially with all of the requests that are coming, uh, before you. And I know that there has been some, uh, conversation in the community, in the, uh, media about the collective bargaining and it was stated that I was going to come forth and ask for a certain amount of money. Um, that was not my intent today because it was my understanding that we were going to speak, uh, or have more discussion on this on our May twenty-fifth, uh, agenda. Uh, but I want to ask the question that if we're, uh, discussing that at the May twenty-fifth agenda, uh, and the budget is already approved, how, uh, do we, uh, take a look at that? Is that something that we push down the road for a couple of months? Um, and I know that, uh, we were on the hook, um, and many of the council members on this day as to, today, on this platform, uh, mentioned that they were advocates for collective bargaining. They ran on that and they gave a word of, uh, for people who they wanted to be endorsed by, um, stating that they were, uh, supporters and would advocate, uh, for collective bargaining. So I do look forward, uh, to this discussion that we will have on May twenty-fifth, but I do want to know how it will be considered, um, in the budget if it's already passed.
Well, council has the ability to, um, reauthorize or deauthorize funding for other priorities to be determined. I can, I can definitely say that, um, the meeting on the twenty-fifth is, is not going to get into the cost associated with collective bargaining. That is just to provide you information on the legalities and what the requirement is for collective bargaining as, as it relates to the council needing to make a decision one way or the other, how you want to proceed with that. And as staff, we will definitely be pulling together those additional requirements, uh, which will be quite extensive in this organization because it's going to impact a number of departments in terms of additional resource requirements.
Thank you. I appreciate that information.
So, Doc, Dr. Whitaker and, and members of council, I know we talked about, um, asking for, calling for the consensus for the additional one point, um, six, seven million to be added into, uh, the budget for our regular meeting. Um, can I get a show of hands, um, for the yeas, if I could see your hands, who wants to add that one point? I see Dr. Whitaker. I see Mr. Moody.
I've, I've got-
Lisa.
Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If, if it's added to the budget, I would, I would like to, uh, for that not to be appropriated until we find out what's going to be returned to the city. Uh, historically, we, we reappropriate that back to the school system. But not knowing what that number is going to be, I think we would be remiss, uh, to appropriate uh, that prior to finding out what that number is in September.
Madam City Manager, can, can you, uh, speak to that? Or is that something that?
We, we, we have a consensus, Mr. Mayor, to move-
That, 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 you know, but that, that, that is correct. That is correct. I just wanted to see if she could speak to that. We do have a consensus. Um, so we have a consensus to add the item to this budget, um, for the schools. And that item will be added so we won't have to do an amendment to the item. We have a few more minutes, gentlemen, so, uh, let's be brief in our discussion because we, we, we want to be respectful of, of the citizens' time.
Mayor, I think you asked the, uh, the manager respond to the appropriation aspect of that.
Can you respond just to the appropriation question? We've already got a consensus that we're, we're going to add it.
Well, my, my response is what I stated previously, that we do anticipate, uh, unspent funds being returned to, uh, the city, um, at the end of this fiscal year. And at that time, the council can elect to reappropriate all or a portion of those funds at that time. Or not.
Mr. Moody. Sir, you have the floor.
I, I'd like to speak to the public safety, uh, aspect of it. I think we're, uh, a number of police officers, uh, we're budgeted for is right around two fifty-three. Uh, we all know we're far short of that and I want to make sure that filling those vacancies, uh, i- is addressed. Uh, you know, I, I realize there's social needs out there, but I don't want that to come from, uh, us getting back up to full complement of police officers. And I'll tell you why. A good example happened, uh, uh, Sunday. Uh, uh, there, there was a burglary in progress. Uh, uh, there, there was a burglary in progress. A neighbor called the police officer or called 911, uh, to report what was happening. Uh, they actually put a ladder up to the house in broad daylight. And, uh, they were throwing, uh, stuff out of the window and, and among that was guns. Guns were stolen from a house. It took a police officer in Churchland over 45 minutes to respond to an active break-in. And, and, and I got to think that's probably because, uh, we're, we're stretched very thin as far as deployments, uh, out in our communities. So, uh, we, we, we need to ramp up, fill in those positions as, as quickly as possible.
And I could, I, I could definitely concur with that and can assure you that we will staff the police to meet the community's needs.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Battle, sir, uh, Councilmember Battle, then, uh, Vice Mayor, and then Dr. Whitaker. You have the floor, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I requested the, um, consensus on the $1.5 million. Let me say, maybe we're not understanding the importance of providing services at the onset of a human being's life and in those communities. That is very essential to the development and preparation for matriculation in an individual's life. So now, let me please say it one more time, and I hope you're paying attention this time. Mayor, I have a consensus for the $1.5 million for those programs and those communities of need, where we need to put the services to prepare them for school, to make the job easier for the teachers, to make it easier for the policemen, to help desert, deter, and cut down on crime, to help them dream about the future and what they can become and the routes to get there. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir.
I was raising my hand for the consensus.
Okay, well, Vice Mayor Barnes, go ahead. You, you have the floor, then we'll, we'll call for the, the consensus on your matter, sir.
Well, um, the, I, I just, Councilman Battles, um, stole the shine regarding this. And I, and I'm in full agreeance with him. Um, we got to make sure that we look at crime on all aspects, just not from a police standpoint. Um, we have, the police have an important job, but we want to make sure that it's easier for them. Um, you, you won't arrest your way out of crime, you won't prosecute your way out of crime. You have to make sure that you prevent crime, and that's what I think what Councilman Battles is asking for does. So I'm in agreeance with it, I'm ready for the consensus as well.
Okay, um, do we, do we have a consensus? Uh, can I see a show of hands for yes? A show of hands for no? It looks like we have a, a majority that wants to, uh, fine the one point additional dollars for what is requested. So Madam City Manager has that under consideration, and we will see where we add that in on our budget discussion for approval.
Um, just, just, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, just for clarification, on the 1.5, um, is there some ordinance language that the, uh, city attorney needs to provide for us before the meeting or what?
We're, we're already, um, prepared for this, um, increase. And what you will note, you mentioned 21 dash, uh, 141. It's going to imperate, uh, it's going to impl- um, to change the operating budget that you see for schools, two point, uh, the 218 will go up 1.1. And then the 1.5 will be in addition to, um, recreation programs. And you'll see a reduction in the CIP. And that's the 2.5, or actually, that's 2.6 that you said. So, um, we will, we've identified 2.5 and we'll just have to identify the other 100,000.
Okay.
Which we, we can do that, we, we can identify that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
I just want to, um, it's a little small comment, but I just want to, um, give a shout out to all of my council members. Um, I think what we're doing as far as our kids will put a dent into what's, what happened over the last year. You know, we just had a, a big year of crime in our city that really involved the children. And we had to act, we had no choice but to act in this budget. And I appreciate it to you guys doing that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? This concludes our public work session. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene to start our regular council meeting in five minutes. Meeting adjourned.